All right, good evening, everyone. It is seven o'clock on the nose. We're going to go ahead and get started. Welcome to City Council this evening. We are going to observe our moment of silent reflection followed by the pledge. Thank you very much. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have a few special presentations this evening. Given the recent municipal election, we have four swearing ends that we need to take care of this evening. The first will be Mr. Sanders administering the oath of office for the mayor for reelection. And then I will administer the oath of office for a reelected member Pamela Buckle, reelected member Jack Rigger, and newly elected member Rob Zuliani. So, Mr. Sanders.
Shall we?
Yes. Give that train a little bit of time. Mr. Mayor, if you'll stand on this side so the cameras can give better shot of you than me.
Now, do a good job of breaking it up really easy for me.
Yeah, yeah. A little at a time. But before we do this, I just want to mention the fact that Mr. Skinner, obviously, is a well-known commodity, and I will say commodity in our community. He's just a young man. He learned this city. He studied this city. He served this city with great enthusiasm and pride. Began his tenure here on City Council, serving on the council itself from 2016 to 2020. Served as a member of the city's water board and historic landmark commission. Now he serves as the chair of all of those committees because of his position as mayor. He's concluding a successful first term of four years. He has enjoyed a successful career in the insurance industry, worked closely with many of the state entities around West Virginia, and has served most recently as the executive director of the Upshur County Development Authority. So he brings a lot of expertise to the office of mayor. Fortunately for all of us, a lot of patience and understanding of the city and the past, which he respects immensely, but also the future of the city, which he's very much concerned with and works hard daily to help guide us in a good, successful, prosperous direction. So having said that, congratulations, first of all, on your successful election. So you will begin your second term July 1st, 2024. But we must administer this oath of office. I'm proud to do so for the second time as well.
Thank you.
If you'll raise your right hand. I, Robert Neil Skinner III,
I, Robert Neil Skinner III,
do solemnly affirm,
Do solemnly affirm.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
the Constitution of the State of West Virginia.
the Constitution of the State of West Virginia.
the Charter and ordinances of the City of Buchanan.
the Charter and ordinances of the City of Buchanan.
West Virginia.
West Virginia.
and faithfully discharge my duties
and faithfully discharge my duties
as mayor of the said city
of mayor of the said city
to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
My photo-taking skills are not the best tonight. Sorry if we got what's wrong. All right, one, two, three. There it goes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Get out of the way.
Congratulations. We'll do what Mr. Sanders did. You'll be over here so the camera can see us. This individual really does not need any sort of introduction. She has been in Buchanan, although she did not grow up in Buchanan. I think she came to Buchanan as quickly as she could. Has been a long, long-time business owner here in town and I think, believe the longest-serving member of our city council. Twenty-
Starting class seven.
Seventh term, okay.
When was Pam?
She started her seventh term. Twenty-four years she's been on city council. Pam has served with, of the utmost dignity of the office. She has the respect of her constituents. I know that if I need to know what the pulse is in our community, I know exactly where to go. Pam has the trust of the citizens and she is never shy to give me a call and say, hey, you need to know about this. This is what's going on. And so, and she just did that on Thursday. So, again, so Pam, we appreciate your dedication to the city council. She has served on the Stocker Youth and Community Center Board, as she's also serves on the Consolidated Public Works Board as well for our city. And she has led the downtown decorating committee for many years and has long been charged with delivering our Fourth of July fireworks. So Pam, thanks for everything that you do for our community. If you would please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Pamela Buckle,
I, Pamela Buckle,
do solemnly affirm,
do solemnly affirm,
that I will support the Constitution
that I will support the Constitution
of the United States,
of the United States,
the Constitution of the State of West Virginia,
the Constitution of the State of West Virginia,
the Charter and ordinances of the City of Buchanan, West Virginia,
the Charter and the ordinance of the City of Buchanan, West Virginia,
and faithfully discharge my duties
and faithfully discharge my duties
as a council member
as a council member
of the said city
of the said city
to the best of my ability
to the best of my ability
so help me God.
so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
So it's officially official. Okay? And then we'll take a little picture. Oh, Randy. Thank you. Jack? I've known Jack for many years. Jack was a classmate of my Aunt Taffin's whiners, who was a longtime coach here with Mrs. Zuliani in Upshur County. Jack was also my middle school principal when Colin and I were in middle school here, not too long ago. We won't date ourselves because then that means that dates you. So, but I've known Jack and known of Jack for many years. I got to really know Jack whenever I was an insurance agent and we had the privilege of insuring Monco Constructors and the governor's mansion and then his home on West Lincoln Street. And Jack has been the consummate gentleman on our city council. He brings a wealth of knowledge from the construction industry as well as the hospitality industry. We're, and it also, not to, last but not least, of course, the education world. And we are a better council because of Jack. Jack was elected in 2016 as a council member and then again in 2020 and we're so, or I'm sorry, 2020 and 2024, yes. And Jack was, he's also, he's been a member of the city's water board. He's been a member of the city's Historic Landmarks Commission, and he's also been a member of our Consolidated Public Works Board. He also voluntarily decided he wanted to serve on the senior citizen board for Upshur County. So very much appreciate all of the service to the community. And this is also a big time, a happy point because you all may recognize that in 2020, shortly after he became elected, 2021, he became very, very, very ill with COVID. And we almost lost Jack. But Jack is stronger than ever. He is, he's made a full recovery. And we are so happy that you were able to be reelected to council and continue to serve and serve healthily. So with that, if you would please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Jackie L. Rigger,
I, Jackie L. Rigger,
do solemnly affirm,
do solemnly affirm,
that I will support the Constitution
that I will support the Constitution
of the United States,
of the United States,
the Constitution of the State of West Virginia,
the Constitution of the State of West Virginia,
the Charter and ordinances of the City of Buchanan, West Virginia,
the Charter and ordinances of the City of Buchanan, West Virginia,
and faithfully discharge my duties
and faithfully discharge my duties
as a council member
as a council member
of the said city
of the said city
to the best of my ability
to the best of my abilities
so help me God.
so help me God.
Congratulations.
Well, thank you.
Sir?
Picture time, Jackie.
Thanks, Mom. He needs to go to tie on.
Can we get another one and you give him? All right. There you go.
Nice catch, Randy.
Let it also be known that we are surrounded here by this, this class of graduates from the high school. Randy, Jack, and Ambi are all graduates of BU in the same class. McCully, although he didn't graduate from Buchanan-Upshur, is a class of 1976, too. So, you know, it's, it's just in the water in this building. So. Mr. Zuliani, would you join me up front, please? The ticket leader from this past election, Mr. Zuliani, longtime Upshur County businessman, very, very respected gentleman in our community. In fact, I don't know, through the election process, no one that I interacted with, and I interacted with quite a few people, had a single negative word to say about Rob Zuliani. And for someone to be around a community, a small town, as long as he has, that's quite an accomplishment. He has raised his family here. Many of them are here right with us this evening. He's owned businesses here. Still the best steak hoagie in Buchanan that ever was and ever will be came from Zuliani's. And he still operates Zul's across the state at every major event you can, you can find. You'll find a Zul's truck, and we're happy that you still invest here in Buchanan. His wife is a Buchanan-Upshur alum and Buchanan native. And so he, we, you know, what's the, what's the shirts that we see in Morgantown? You're married into this. So, but we,
Well, we're born to me.
we, we thank you for everything that you do for our community. We're all very much looking forward to serving with you on city council. I know that we all have the utmost respect for you. We respect the victory that you, that you've scored here, earning, of course, the respect of our community, and that's what's most important. So congratulations again. We're happy to have you. Would you please raise your right hand? I, Robert Zuliani,
I, Robert Zuliani,
do solemnly affirm,
do solemnly affirm,
that I will support the Constitution
that I will support the Constitution
of the United States
of the United States
the Constitution of the State of West Virginia
the Constitution of the State of West Virginia
the Charter and ordinances of the City of Buchanan, West Virginia
the Charter and ordinances of the City of Buchanan, West Virginia
and faithfully discharge
and faithfully discharge
my
duties as a council member
of the said city
of the said city
to the best of my ability
to the best of my ability
so help me God
so help me God
congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, now it's picture time. Would you like to invite your family up with you?
Sure, what a idea.
Come on.
Yes.
That wasn't part of the plan.
That was forced. I'm gonna get it when I get home.
You gotta smile, guys.
All right, got the two over there.
We gotta hug.
Yeah.
There we go. You're a mark. That's good. I like that. You just charge.
I can do it every once in a while. Okay, all right. I'll start at one, two, three. One more, one, two, three. Let's go.
There you go. Got it.
Sorry, Mom.
Congratulations. For the media's knowledge, those oaths of office technically take place July 1st. So that's why Rob did not join us up here as a, as a member of the council, as he is technically, although we've just done that, he is not a member of the council officially until July 1st. So his first meeting with us will be on July 11th, as you'll recall. And it's later in the agenda, but we have rescheduled that to combining our July 4th and our July 18th meeting. So Thursday, July 11th will be our, our singular city council meeting scheduled in the month of July. So Rob's getting off easy. Only, only one meeting.
Are you available July 1?
So, all right. Congratulations again to all. And Randy, thank you for administering mine.
Absolutely.
Okay. JP, would you mind bringing me the sign-in sheet or Ambi, if you have it? Thank you, sir. All right. Under public-recognized guests, we have Jody Light that I would, I would imagine is here to talk about, hmm.
What just, what happened?
Yeah.
Gone. I was out of town.
It was, it was really little. It's that, what's that little thing that, yeah. Yeah.
Lot of hardwoods used.
That's right. We, to bring us up to speed on a weekend full of really, really good food and good fellowship and a big crowd downtown at the Barbecue Bash, so the floor is yours, ma'am.
Well, considering the mayor and the city reporter weren't here, but we'll let you do it like that. You just missed some good barbecue, all kinds for you.
You saved some.
They'll be really good now. Let me go ahead and give you these. I didn't get a chance. I'll do what I did last year for you. That's kind of the easiest thing to kind of tell you what happened and give you some. Gonna keep it brief because I'm not technically on the agenda. So far, we're only two days out. I thought I had a couple more days. I forgot this was moved up. I've tried to watch as much as I can the different comments that have come in. We actually have one of our vendors here who might care to comment. So far, fingers crossed, and I asked Robbie at lunchtime, I've heard nothing but positive comments about the event overall from teams, from judges, from the public, from vendors. There's always something out there. You never know, but so far, so good. I'll try to keep you updated. Most of the food vendors, once again, sold out, some multiple times. Some of them sold out Friday and Saturday. Last year it was mostly Saturday. Want to thank Jack and Pam, our council members who did come to our welcome reception. Hope you enjoyed it. We had a full house at the Peak Pavilion, and that was, we had some sponsors. We had barbecue teams, barbecue judges from across, I mean, up and down the East Coast. To my knowledge, the hotels were full. We had people that were calling, looking for Airbnbs and other things. Some of them stayed over in Weston. We were hoping, a lot of them did really well. Some of the restaurants have already said to me that they, they were very busy. And, and we noticed a lot of people did a lot of retail purchasing, some retail therapy. So hoping it went really well. That's, that's what I can tell you. What you have in your hand, again, this is a very quick one. I didn't have much time and I probably missed some, but these are just some of the comments. And I think a couple of them are worth, worth mentioning. You can see they're from Virginia, Pennsylvania, Illinois, West Virginia, North Carolina, Michigan, Kingsport, Tennessee. They're all over, Maryland, New Jersey. We had a lot of folks come into town, and some of these folks, if you notice, I put a little note there. These are just a few of them. The ones in red are ones that have never been here before. And I think the comments they made- And I think the comments they made bears, and please understand, the reason they mentioned me is I'm the one that signed the papers and they see my name out there, but it was a team effort indeed. There's some, just some really nice, nice comments. Uh, the one guy from Illinois, actually Paul Buo, Buo, a smoking ghost, is actually a Kansas City Barbecue Society Board of Directors member as well, never been to West Virginia, but it was nice, he said, they came here, they've never been here before, and we rolled up a red carpet on a very well-run event. Um, there's, there's a couple of them, interestingly, this year mentioned about, uh, the drive, uh, the fellow Chunky Barbecue, the very first one, I thought was interesting, as, as I'm sure you're not, you are aware, the drive into West Virginia isn't an easy one, especially when pulling one of those 45-foot trailers behind. But the Almost Barbecue Bash is 100% worth the drive. A fantastic event, the dinner Friday night, a lot of people really enjoyed. Uh, some of them, if you notice, the one Bowman's Butt said, hadn't been in a couple years, it's spectacular, he loves that small-town, public festivals and so forth. Uh, there's several that mentioned that, how hospitable the people were, how welcoming they were, um, trying to think the one, I think that was a judge over here. Yeah, I think it was interesting, one of them said, um, this was our first competition we ever did back in 2018, and we were at the asylum, and that has a very special place in their hearts, love the new location of Buckhannon and the added public aspect of it, such a great event. If you've never been to it, you need to put it on your schedule. Now you understand, these, these folks have all their own little groups of barbecue folks and hundreds and some thousands, so that word's getting out about Buckhannon, which is really good. I like the one from the judge from New Jersey, he wanted to thank us for allowing him to participate, we're just thrilled he came. Um, the venue is so nice, the people are so friendly and great, I wish I lived in West Virginia, and he's from New Jersey, but the job has me elsewhere. I've been with you, our event, every year since the second event, it's always so organized, I really like that it's back in Buckhannon to allow the entire community to easily participate. The other two locations, he was at both, were nice, too, but it's just easier for more to participate in the present location, and the whole town seems to join in, congratulating us again. So, uh, I, I think that kind of says it all. Um, we always scour and look for, I hope I don't find, but we look for any negatives because if they are, then that gives us something to correct and improve for the coming year. So with that, I'm just, if you have any questions or comments, or you are, Rob, you were there, what do you think?
I just, I echo the sentiments of the one gentleman you almost read, because I was with you from year one.
Yeah.
And it was downtown, on the main street area, and then was with you when it went to Weston, to the hospital, and then, uh, to Stonewall. And it was never, it was fantastic, the first year I was here, and then when we moved out of Upsher County, we get the town some more support, the community support, I don't know what the factors were, it was never the same volume-wise, hometown feel-wise.
Right.
So the first year when we were here was one of the biggest, and now the last two years that it's been here, sales-wise, I'm strictly speaking, have been bigger than any of the locations that, when they left Upsher County. So that says something, says a lot for Upsher County, and it's been in two, and you would think at Stonewall that would be a prime place to have an event like that, and it was nowhere near the attendance.
The asylum had really good attendance, but it just, it, but it was condensed.
Right.
Yeah, it was, it was a tight spot. Uh, Stonewall had a immaculate space, more space, we're already looking at what to do next year, we're gonna work and we flip this, work and put that, we have great ideas, but you have to have the space. So, um, the people have been very receptive, we've got all the good comments. Have you folks had any good, bad, or ugly? Hopefully no ugly, but if you got them, we need to know them.
Everything I've received has been very positive.
Same here. Same here, I've heard nothing but good comments.
Dave?
An outfit from Texas, that's the best barbecue I've ever had in my life.
Which one?
My entire 38 years of life.
Which one did you eat from, do you remember?
How many years was it? 66.
Oh, Off the Bone?
Yeah.
Okay. Columbus, he's been with us, the ones that were with us, Rob Zuliani, uh, Jaws Barbecue, the one you were talking about, Off the Bone, he started up very small, he's grown a lot, and the kettle corn people, and the homemade ice cream from Elkins, they've been with us since the very beginning, and we told them, you know, what is a barbecue? We said, we don't know if we have five people, 500 people, and Stonewall, we had the one year after COVID, it was tough. I mean, the vendors, it was tough, it was lean, they stayed with us, and we will protect them, and we have people who want to come in, and they want to compete with Rob, and I've got a better, no, it's not gonna happen. But we appreciate those folks for their support when, you know, they, they, they could've done something else.
When are you gonna get next year?
Next year's our 10th, I was gonna let you make sure, June 12th through the 14th, 2025 is our 10-year reunion, who'd have thunk it when we first started here? Um, and the other one you need to write down is Friday, October 4th, once again, is our Fish Fry fundraiser, don't think that's been done in, in this area, we have the gentleman who actually been, do you remember the guy from the Fresh Catch at Stonewall? Did a great seafood, and he said, is anyone who eats seafood at a barbecue, he sold out, couldn't keep up. He's coming in from Norfolk, West Virginia, is a seafood restaurant and a, he's a seafood purveyor, I guess, and he'll be cooking, but we'll have all-you-can-eat, um, fish, fries, slaw, hush puppies, dessert, water for 20 bucks, and kids a week for 10. And that's our fundraiser, so we, we love our sponsors, we can't do without our sponsors, but we try to be somewhat self-sufficient, do other things, too. So that'll be Friday, October 4th, at the Pavilion, at the bicentennial. And we'll do takeout or eat-in.
Yeah, I've heard everything positive.
Thank you.
Well organized, I, I want to thank you for inviting us down.
Sure.
It was delicious, it was well organized, and thank you again for letting, allowing me to take a dinner to my sister.
Absolutely. Did she enjoy it?
I would've paid, yes, yes.
Um, for those who don't know, that, um, Claudia, who has Mama Roma's, did it last year, and she did again this year, and so we had two kinds of pasta, we had garlic, her homemade garlic rolls, and it was just a hit. There's a lot of other comments on here that talk about the delicious Italian dinner, they don't get this other places. If they get anything, sometimes they, here's a pizza, or I've seen them give them little sandwiches, they just don't get that, and so we try to make them feel very welcome, so they want to come back and put on a good front, not just for our event, but for Buckhannon. So.
I just have one more thing to say to add to it.
Sure.
Jerry's in the back trying to be inconspicuous, so.
Yeah, I know, he's hiding back there.
Just how well the city works, your whole city staff works for these events, Strawberry Festival, the barbecue, it's seamless, having people set up and being mobile and showing up all at the same time is a disaster, and trying to get out at the same time is a disaster. And over the years, the, the ability of Jawbone to handle more power requirements, just to not flood, to not, just as a vendor, it's, it's very appreciative, and it's one of the smoothest cities, whenever I come into a city or we go to another city, usually it's a disaster. It takes hours to set up, and with these guys, you're in and out.
And we have power issues at both the other locations, we had, we had 125 KW generators just die, and you talk about struggling when you have vendors that, you know, and it's hot and, and competitors that are dependent on that, um, you don't just go out and get a 125 KW just at the snap of your finger to replace it. So we do appreciate Jerry and his crew, he works with us wonderfully, whatever we need, JB, Matt Gregory, you know, they, they really go above and beyond.
They did a great job last year with the Wambsley event, Austin, just unbelievable.
So, yes.
Something I observed, that maybe next year we can put dips down at the corner of Madison in Florida, because I sat out there with Michelle Japp and her husband for a long time, a lot of people was not stopping at those stop signs, it was kind of dangerous, a lot, several, I mean, I'm telling you several times, and then there was also people who was parking on Madison that weren't supposed to be there, they were actually getting out and moving the horse.
Oh, yeah.
Parking down there.
Yeah. And we actually had one got his mirrors clipped by a team because he was told not to park it, that was an emergency lane, we kept telling him.
Right.
So that was his fault, he parked where he shouldn't have been, and he kind of sucked it up, just a lot, I don't think it was severe damage, but, you know, you just, those things don't maneuver on time, we got 55 feet trying to get in and park.
I mean, I actually saw a truck not even move the horse, that, that going in there, and he went, he went up on the sidewalk and into the grass in Jawbone and went.
I, I don't, I don't know.
And a big old truck.
I mean, they do it, they move them.
Yeah, but somebody needs to be there at that corner.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Yeah, they, the people, I mean, just driving in general, I mean, the amount of people that enter the wrong way, that, you know, I, I observed at Strawberry Festival, the amount of people that entered Chapel Hill parking lot through the exit, the amount of people that still, every day, enter by the blue, uh, mail drop down here in the, at the alley, they enter through there and they try to go opposite flow of traffic toward Jawbone, I mean, there's, it's not just events, it's, they, they don't look at signs, they don't read, so.
Well, that was pretty dangerous at times down there, I mean, they were just flying through there.
And we have teams that had to cross, all those teams had to cross, there were safety cross plates to turn in, so we'd ask them if they could, you know, stop that traffic, because they can't like run across the street with these things that, you know, and I'd be remiss, Janet McCorkle's with me, he's been on our board for about three years, started as a sponsor, um, and came over to asylum, and she said, wow, I love this, what can I do, and she's been a board member ever since and a valuable one, so we appreciate that.
We have a hot wash, uh.
Monday morning.
Monday morning, okay.
We just had ours an hour ago, just came from there on our internal one, but yeah, we did. And hopefully you can be there. Any other questions or comments?
Thank you again, Jerry.
Yeah.
Thank you, appreciate it. We'll see you next year.
I'll say, Jerry. Thank, thank your crew.
Yeah, we'll try.
I enjoyed being a judge.
Now, Jack had a good time, he was a judge.
I had a great time.
Did you eat that, uh, oh, we should, yeah, I'd be remiss if I didn't miss that, we had anything but dessert, and Jack judged that, and there were desserts like you, you can't imagine, dessert. But our mystery box, I couldn't tell you the last time because I had, you know, a shoot or something, but AF Winning Food Service was very kind, they supplied the cash for the prizes, and they brought in these great things, and they had all West Virginia products, and they had carrots, and they had potatoes, and they had the West Virginia honey, and the protein was a beef tongue. Now, you should've seen some various, a few of them went, oh, that's, we had some real interesting, we had some really interesting pictures on Facebook that evening of tongues and things, and what do I do with this, and Googling things, so we appreciate AF Winning and all our sponsors, and especially the city of Buckhannon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
It, it continues to be one of the events that, that puts Buckhannon, uh, on the map, and, you know, when we see, as we all see it, um, the inevitable just negative comments that are about every, every, every subject matter under the sun, uh, comparing us to another city that does something better, um, complaining about things in Buckhannon, you know, we really, how fortunate are we? We have a fantastic annual event in Strawberry Festival that kicks off the year, we follow it right up with, with barbecue, that is, it, it's totally different, but it is, it is a necessary event in our community that brings a, a lot of people in. We have a summer full of Festival Fridays, we celebrate our high school, we have, we have a nice homecoming parade and celebration that includes the entire community, and then we have multiple events at Christmas time that, that serve kids all the way to seniors, and it is, I, I think, you know, the fact that we do all of that for a city of our size and still throughout the year have wonderful restaurants, great retail, walkable streets, great sidewalks, a nice college, you know, there's, there, I'm sorry, there's nothing to complain about.
It's one of the nicest small towns in America.
And, and we, we need, we need to be, you know, the beacons of that, and I know that we are, but, you know, it's just, you, you see negative negativity out there, and it's like, these other communities don't have even a tenth of what we have. So, but, and Jody and, and, you know, Janet and all, all the team, they're, they're a big part of, of, of that, that's why we are what we are, and so, thank you again. Down to department reports, and before we begin our department reports, I would like to invite Mr. Croston to come up, uh, to the front, please. This is on our agenda for this evening, but I want, because we're entering our department reports time, um, the city council, uh, has, uh, been charged, uh, we, we've known about Jerry's retirement for, for quite some time. He has a, he has a ticker on his phone that tells us the, it tells him the exact day that he will be retiring from our, uh, organization, from a very long and successful career, and I don't want it to go without said, uh, this city is, everything we just talked about that we do that's positive is, is because of Jerry and the crews of our city. It's not because of us sitting here, Jerry and Ambi and all of our employees, they make us the special place that we are. And all the events that we have would not, they would not happen without Jerry Arnold. And so, uh, although we really are gonna be very sad to lose Jerry as a, as a member of the employment side, we know he'll still be a resident here and still, uh, be a part of our community, but, you know, Jerry is, um, leaving big shoes to fill, and, uh, we are, we are indebted forever to, to Jerry's service for our community. Having said that, the council's been charged to look at how in the world do we move on to find the right candidate, uh, with the enthusiasm and the know-how to move forward and to take our community into the next generation. And so the council last week interviewed three very good candidates, all three were, could have easily fit into, uh, this role and grown into it, um, but one in particular stood out, uh, the most. Ethan Croston has been with our city and served as the superintendent at the sanitary department. He is a Tucker County, uh, graduate from high school, Parsons, uh, native, and he and his wife have chosen to make Buckhannon, uh, their home. He has, uh, he has matured and grown into the supervisor position at the sanitary board, he's learned every possible aspect of that, uh, of that part of our city, and he is gonna be looking forward to learning all of the, all of the rest of the departments and how everything fits together as our brand-new public works director. So would you please welcome Ethan, uh, Croston as our new public works director? I want you to know, I told, I, I, we had a sanitary board meeting this morning, and, um, uh, where it was announced, uh, there, because that is the board that Ethan reports to. And so I followed Ethan out, uh, to the sanitary, uh, to the sewer plant this morning, and Ethan got all of the crews pulled in and, and, and sat around waiting for the announcement, and, uh, because I, I wanted to be there to, to share it, uh, with Ethan, uh, that they're, they're, uh, gonna watch the bird fly the coop a little bit out there, um, but they were all very, very, uh, excited for Ethan, they congratulated him, they, they're, they're behind him all the way, and that just shows how much respect he's garnered from hit, from his department, um, that he ma, that he manages and supervises every day, and to take that into the, to the next level with our public works director. Ethan will still be, um, responsible for the sanitary department becau, for the time being, because what he's gonna be doing from now forward, he's going to be shadowing Jerry through some events, seeing some council meetings, the other, uh, meetings that we have, the water board, the san, the, uh, waste board, consolidated public works board, um, the planning commission, you name it, that, that Jerry would be a part of, uh, Ethan will be a part of, and also just kind of seeing how it all works outside of the sanitary department. But as I said this morning in front of his, um, colleagues at the sanitary board, we have all of the confidence, uh, in the world in you, we thank you for your dedication to the city, we know that you're gonna do a great job, and we are here, uh, to help in any way possible and to support you in that role, and you have, you have a great, uh, crew here, uh, in both in city hall, uh, to help you as well as out in the field with Jerry. Um, we're not, uh, we're not just gonna throw you to the wolves and say, okay, do something. Um, we, uh, we, we, we want you to be successful, we know you'll be successful, um, and we're just, we're really happy that you expressed interest in this position, and we're really happy to be able to extend it to you, so.
I appreciate it.
No, yeah, can we get a good shake, or whatever, hand, oh, handshake. One, two, three. One more one. Okay.
And how about, uh, for this, get Jerry Arnold up here as well.
Oh, yeah, that would be cute.
It's right.
Yeah, just a little.
Actually, we'll put him in the middle.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
No, you. You're front and center.
Perfect. One, two, three.
There you go. One more, one more. Drop your hands in the front like a man. There you go. See? All right, there we go. Anything you want to say?
Appreciate you all giving the opportunity.
Didn't you change your mind after lasting days?
Not yet.
Am I going to answer that? No.
Jerry's going to get it before I can answer that. He's ready.
Enjoy that full head of hair now.
It's already working.
Yeah, take a look at Rafe.
That's just from three or four years.
Yeah. One of the things that I believe it was Councilman McCauley observed following our interviews with, for our public works director, this is an organization that has a long legacy of promoting from within. And we have seen great success from promoting from within. The people, early on, when they're in the trenches, they're the people that we know that you can depend on. I mean, we have, we have a 40-plus-year career firefighter here as our, as our chief. We have, we have about the same in our, in our police chief. Ambi's worked here since the city was founded. So, you know.
Lots of Jerry talk.
No, just, just since, just since the mid-'70s. But Jerry, Jerry started as a waste collection operator and worked his way all the way up to being where he is today, and has said he wants to finish out his career with the waste department, and we've, we've agreed to that. So, and that, those are just, just very few examples of a city full of employees who began, you know, making, making peanuts. And, you know, those peanuts have been smaller in years past due to the economy to scale, but have worked their way up to being in positions that they are today. And we are indebted to everybody that has given this city everything they've had to make it what it is. So, we, we are proud to continue that legacy with, with Ethan. So, congratulations.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right, now that the pomp and circumstances are over for the evening, Mr. Arnold, do you have a report for us this evening?
There's nothing new to report unless there's questions. I will make one correction, though. You, you said I was a, what was it, a waste collection technician?
Operator.
Operator, no, I was a garbage man.
In those days, it was just, yeah.
Riding the truck.
Flying the old man.
And now, once you retire, you'll just be responsible for making sure your toter is filled correctly.
I'll still take the garbage man at home.
Make sure it's in bags. Make sure it's out the night before.
But no, I don't have anything unless you'll ask questions for me.
The city park is still in, in the works. It is, all we're waiting on is J.F. Allen to lay the blacktop for both pickleball court and the, the, the new basketball court, and then as well as the road network.
Yeah, Ethan's going to meet him next week with an Allen representative. So, again, it takes a specialized paper, or that's what we're looking for. They have one that is, is able to run on GPS coordinates. So, with the, with the grading that has to be done there, you know, pickleball and basketball can only have 0.8 to 1% grade. So, with grade being that, fine. We, we elected to try to get them to bring their big paper in, pave that so that, so that we have proper drainage and we don't have too much side slot on the course. And, and the nets and everything are in for the basketball, and I believe, I know they're ordered. I don't know what the, what the term of getting them in from pickleball, but I believe it's in a couple of weeks we're expecting us.
Okay.
It's coming together, but again, you know, we've been in low weather, and it's kind of hard to push dirt and rain.
Also, Andrew from our street department, he reached out to Jerry and I, and we pulled the trigger on this quickly. And Ambi was happy because it was inexpensive and, and it was a good deal. It was, it was, for what was found elsewhere versus what we found in more of it for less, Ambi was thrilled. But you know that black fence that is down on Florida Street by Stalker? We scored a whole, like, just... Yes, a whole bunch of it, more than we need for city park, but we bought it all because we never know where we might need it. And we've got opportunities on lots across the city, even potential parks in the south side of town that we could use that fence for. So, that fence is going to be mirrored in a lot of places. So, it's, and we're going to have a uniform look to all of our public spec places.
Does that mean we're going to do it on the side of Robin Rigs now?
That's one of the park board that's on right now. It's just, all I've got is the thing.
The front, that's what, that's, we cut, well, that'll have to come back to the Parks and Rec Board, because at the time, we were only looking at dollars and cents what we could do. But we, we ran across this really good deal.
A lot of good comments about that fence also.
Yeah.
Actually, the fence we purchased, they, actually, the thought sold us, sold it to us, sold it cheaper than what the owner of the company bought it for. So, they had additional fencing, but it was closer to the price that we're typically paying per panel, per fence. I don't, it's not as appealing as what we just purchased. But we did, actually, we sent a truck up this morning, it's back on site, so we have it in our possession on site.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jerry.
Yes, sir.
Finance Director, Ambi Jenkins.
Okay, so, I didn't quite come with the founding of the city, but I did come with the woodwork class. So, I'm going to give your balances for your enterprise funds, and I've got a really short report tonight. Okay, so, for May 31st, 2020, waste collection, board money market and checking, $1,704,000. And then, they have $308,000 CD savings. And then, they have a letter of credit of $64,000 for the landfill. Water board, money market and checking, $1,260,000. That working capital and savings CD that we did close out, $168,222. We moved, it matured, so we moved that to the money market to reinvest in better rates, and the water board approved that, so we'll move that over. So, currently, we have $726,000 in investments, and then we'll add that $168,000 to that, the next report. Sanitary board, money market and checking, $844,000, and then working capital and CDs at $459,000, and the stormwater funds at $149,000. The bills in your packet tonight, the ones worth noting, Larry Gregory. We gave him a deposit, this is for the fireworks vendor, and we gave him a deposit for $5,000, and the mayor probably hasn't, he wants to report later on.
Yeah.
Upsher County Clerk, we spent $7,100 for the May 24 election, so we have to pay the county for our portion of the election. $4,000 to the Commission of Accreditation for Kalia, that's Police Department Annual Kalia Fee. Whitmer Public Safety Group for thermal imaging cameras and host couplings for the fire department, $12,000. Striker Flex Financial, that's to pay off the life tax that we purchased, $28,000. 2020 Gen Systems Incorporated Career Test for Volunteers was $2,700. Benjamin Arizona for three weeks of mowing the loft, $6,100. Comfort Tech, $4,600 for ring furnace and AC unit. That was the street department's share of the HVAC system at their department. Central Supply, $2,612 yards of concrete for the training facility, and $1,500 for Brazil Enterprises for labor at the training facility. I do want to mention, you know, we're getting close to our year, so we're working on June 30th paperwork to close out our year. So, we want to get all of our bills paid, get everything finished up for our fiscal year, that way on June 30th, 2024. I do expect a healthy balance on hand, so I want to talk to Jerry. I think it's councils, from my indications, that you want to invest that in some infrastructure. So, we'll, I'll talk to Jerry, maybe have some conversations with you when we bring that over into the new year. There was a, I had a conversation with Stacy Kerikoff last week with the USDA concerning the Stalker project, so there's been a little movement on that. National has now directed her to have a document signed by the mayor for the state side of the USDA, which will enable her to deliver the letter of conditions we've been waiting on for several months to proceed with the next steps in the USDA project. And that's when you'll get your bond documents back in motion and possible seeking rates for interim financing. So, preliminaries, just one step the mayor will have to take care of next week, some housekeeping on that. And that's all I have.
As Ambi mentioned, the fireworks, I wanted to surprise her. We typically, you know, take care of that ourselves financially, but wanted to provide her with an end-of-the-year gift. So, our fireworks are sponsored five ways, and we want to make sure that we thank, and we will be doing this on a series of posts this week on our social media and our billboard out here on Route 20. But our fireworks sponsors for $2,000 apiece are Citizens Bank of West Virginia, Buckhannon Toyota, Mike Ross and Ike Morris, Parmar, the Donut Shop, and then Potesta and Associates. So, we thank those businesses for investing in our community and helping us celebrate the Fourth of July with our fireworks. And that's a, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't sound like, you know, we're a large entity with, you know, with a multimillion-dollar operation, but, you know, that $10,000 right at the beginning of the fiscal year is, that's, that's helpful. So, we thank those businesses for their sponsorship of the event. And also, before Chief Kimball takes over, I want to read you something. Jerry and I talked about this earlier, it did not make the packet because we just got it. But the West Virginia Division of Highways is pleased to announce that the city of Buckhannon has been awarded the 2023 Transportation Alternatives Grant for the Buckhannon Morton Avenue and North Locust Street Sidewalk and Lighting Project, Phase One. And this is, of course, in Upsher County. The grant consists of $60,000 in federal funds and $15,000 in matching funds provided by the city of Buckhannon for a total project of $75,000. So, we thank Jay Holland for working on this for us, and Jerry Arnold. This came from the West Virginia Division of Highways, from Jimmy Riston himself. So, we wanted to make sure we let council know that this is coming. It is, it is received, signed, sealed, and delivered, so we'll look for that project soon. So, again, thank you, Jerry, thank you, Jay, for, for helping us with securing that funding.
That's fantastic.
Hey, with the fireworks, with the property sold down there, we're still getting to use that property?
Mm-hmm, yeah, Community Care is willing to let us use the property for fireworks, so. Yeah, and our fire department works with them on that. So, okay, Chief Kimball.
First off, I'd like to congratulate returning members of council, the mayor, Jack, and, and I'd like to welcome Mr. Zulu N, Councilman, to the team. So, also, you know, I've been absent for a few months. It's been exciting times at the Kimball household. My daughter's transitioning from high school to college, and I was very excited. She, she received the Motta Peterson Female Athlete Award Scholarship at commencement, so that was big, exciting, and she's worked hard for it, and I want to congratulate her on that. And she, she's going to be attending West Virginia Wesleyan College, stay local, so playing softball for Coach Warner, so. So, back to this, in your packets, year-to-date through May, and also, the month of May is in there. Just to, we're still averaging about 87 to 90 calls a month. I think we had 100 and some in the month of May. Due to probably Strawberry Festival, a little uptick, we're working on, we continue to work with our comm center through the accreditation process to, to do those responses in timely manners. I provide gap report information every year and work with the comm center on specific types of calls, QA, QI, call volume, and stuff like that. If you get a chance, training facility is coming about quickly. We got the burn boxes stacked, they're bolted down, ready to go. We're getting ready, as soon as the fiscal year starts in July, we'll be out there cutting holes and making doors and windows and moving on. So, I'm hoping, if we can get welders in there and do some stuff, we can maybe be burning by the end of the year officially. So, so if you get a chance, go out there and take a look at us, a lot of work. Fortunately, we were out at Trust Joyce doing some fire prevention, and there was a gentleman out there with a crane, working for, for a warehouser, approached him, and he came out and for a small fee, he set the boxes for us. That's, it worked out really well, and worked out timely, and in two days, we were done with it, so. We also, the first of the month, we had a county bus extrication course out there. It's a very opportune thing that you don't get to do very often, is work on school buses. So, back all over a year ago, the Board of Education had donated us three retired school buses. And with the equipment the city had available, and with the help of the sawmill, we were able to put some of these buses in some particular ways we wanted them, to learn how to extricate students out of them if that ever happens. It was a very, very good class. We had 13 members from our county departments show up for it. So, it's not something you get to do every year is work on school buses. We were out there for two days, everybody enjoyed it, it was good times. We have two members, two junior members. We have accepted two junior members in the last couple of months, and we have sponsored them to go to the Junior Fire Academy over at Jackson's Mill. And they are there with 100, there's 140 kids there, the largest they've had. So, two of our Buckhannon Fire Department juniors are there, and I'm hoping to be able to bring them here to council meeting, and they can talk about their adventures at Junior Fire Camp, so. As Ambi was saying, finished expenditures for the fire department for now. Hopefully, we will not have anything break down, tear up, or anything like that to where I have to come up and, I'm sorry, Ambi, you know, we need to talk. But hopefully, everything, everything went well on the budget this year, so. We assisted the VFW with some flag burning at the training facility. We moved it out there, worked very well. The VFW created this rack to put their flags on, burn, has ceremony, like for taking the veterans. It's really neat to hang out with, and they're, they're kind of like the fire service. You look around, we're all, all old guys, you know? It's like, where's the young people, you know? And so, you know, we discussed some of that stuff, talked about the military, and had a good time with them. Couple of things, you know, we, we interviewed for probationary firefighter, and I know a couple of things that we discussed during that, and one of them being, I would like to review the process of hiring and a few other things in our requirements to be a firefighter over the next few months. One being, you know, if it's a period of time from the initial test to one year of hiring, that maybe we require a member or the people we're interviewing to take the physical agility test again. A lot can happen in one year. That way, they stay in shape, and once they, once somebody gets employed at the fire department, they're going to be mandated to stay in shape, so that's one thing. We also, with the training facility evolving, like to see, right now, they have to have firefighter one to apply to be a firefighter. Once we get our training facility done, we would like to prefer to do that in-house. So, if somebody wants to apply to be a firefighter and they don't have training, that's fine. It also adds to our pool of applicants, so I think that'll be a benefit. I know, I've been speaking to some other paid fire departments around the state, and they're, they're kind of Bridgeport you got away from it also. They had, they had 64 applicants for Bridgeport this last time. The time before, they had to list it out three times to get like nine people apply. But they had 64 apply, 32 showed up, and 12 passed the test. So, you know, you still got to look at it, about a 20% success rate. And another thing, you know, I've been looking at and talking to other fire departments about, and we have a 10-hour mile living requirement. I would like to look at manipulating that some, not getting rid of it by no means, but look at more of a time-response area. So, when you look at, from the game form here, you know, on a normal day, you come by the high school and the middle school, it'll take you 25 minutes to get here. But we could extend in places in the county, and food for thought is, we'd add to our pool of applicants. Also, the housing gets cheaper the little further you go out. And if you're, if we're trying to get individuals that are, that are not married and don't have a two-income household, it's difficult sometimes to find residency within that 10-hour miles that they can afford. So, just food for thought, stuff I'd like to sit down and discuss at some point in time. You know, we talked about the accreditation, Dave, I'll, I'll give you updates on that. We're almost to the point where we're going to be getting a mentor. Performance indicators are getting completed. There's going to be some that we're still going to have some concerns and problems with that involve, not necessarily the concern to be from here, but like building code and fire code enforcement outside the city limits because there isn't any. And that's a, that's a requirement, and I don't know how, we've discussed that, but it hasn't moved out in the county. So, I am getting like building permits. When somebody applies for a building permit, we get those regularly now, but we're not allowed to go inspect those buildings as they're being built, so. So in the city, the building code enforcement events and Tanner Smith work together very good and help the citizens get their buildings built to pay, so. There's a few things that we're going to have to work diligently with the county to get that worked out, so. But other than that, we're moving, things are happening, it's hot out. Any questions?
When we first started the accreditation process in 2016, there were no fire department agencies that had been accredited in the entire state. It's my understanding that that's still the case. There is not a single accredited agency. And there's only two fully accredited police agencies despite the hype and the whole bit. It's like, what's, what's wrong with the rest of this?
It's, you know, and the most difficult thing that I, I have come across is, you know, dealing with two entities, our district encompassing two authorities having jurisdictions. That's one of the most difficult things. The other difficult thing I've realized is, is trying to parallel our volunteer organization with our career staff and having the same standards. And, and not that we shouldn't have the same standards, but sometimes it's difficult to get people, you know, and, and to be able to write that in a performance indicator, it's difficult. It's, so it, we're getting there. It's a slow process. To say, over the past seven and a half years, we have improved immensely. Our response times, our training level, our, our personalities, our, our mentalities, you know, we're, we're a top-notch fire department. I'd go to battle any day with our guys, so, but yeah, we'll get there eventually.
Thanks, Chief. Thanks, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Congratulations to Jansen.
Yep, thank you.
All right, City Attorney Tom O'Neil.
Thank you, Mayor. Good to be with you. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak remotely today. Just by way of update, I'm working on, still some of the, I'm sorry, still working on matters that we talked about last week and hope for our next meeting in May to have a couple of things ready for your review, including, including a quote about ordinance codification and a draft of our updated criminal ordinance that I'm currently working with, with Judge Eckert, our municipal court judge Helen Eckert, to, to prepare and we'll have something ready for you soon. But other than that, we're plugging ahead and be happy to take any questions.
Any questions for Tom?
Any update on the city college property swap, Tom?
Again, like last time, I'm trying to get some movement out of the surveyor and if any of you have a, a way to prompt some action that's more effective than mine, that's, that's our bottleneck right now. It's not for lack of trying.
Thanks, Tom.
Tom, I believe, this is David, I believe there was a situation on College Avenue where there was a continuance on the shed.
I'm having a hard time, Gary.
David, yeah, you're from up to the, thank you.
Can you hear me now?
I can, yes.
Tom, I understand there's a, an issue with the continuance on the property on College Avenue where there was a shed in front that should not be there. Do you have any idea what's going to happen there yet?
That matter is in front of the Circuit Court right now. The zoning board of appeals denied the variance request from that property owner. That property owner is appealing to the Circuit Court. The judge asked me to prepare an order in that matter. It is sitting in the judge's chambers right now, waiting to be entered and we need to, what the judge wants is for the zoning board of appeals to take this matter up again and to more fully develop the record on her allegation that the, that the board is treating her in a discriminatory way. I am very confident in our position on that matter. It's just a matter of the Circuit Court's process playing out under the judge.
Yeah, well, it's, it's a very important matter as far as I'm concerned and we need to keep moving on it. Thank you.
I, I agree 100%. I think the ability of the city to enforce its own zoning ordinances, especially kind of in the face of citizens who might just want to ignore it, is really important and in this case is, is, is very important for that reason. I agree with you fully.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Okay. Thanks.
All right, down to correspondence and information. Due to the holiday schedule, as we already mentioned, we are merging the city council meetings, July 4th and July 18th, to be held on July 11th. So there will be no city council meeting the week of Fourth of July, as Fourth of July would be the time that we would meet. Our, our city fireworks, again, will be on the 5th, so that will correspond with Festival Fridays. Special session of city council on 6/27 at 9:00 AM. We will be interviewing for possible hire of probationary police officer, so please mark your calendars, 6/27 at 9:00 AM. And then due to the holiday schedule, we are, we've rescheduled our city count, our Stockard Youth and Community Center Board meeting also to line up with our city council meeting on the 11th. That will be at 4:30 PM. And we have a notice of the planning commission. This is their regular quarterly meeting. After speaking with Dr. Alloy, Teresa, it was decided that because of the timeframe in which this meeting is already set to take place, it made sense just to keep it on 7:15. So mark your calendar for July 15th, 7:00 PM here in city council chambers, where the matter of the Airbnb in, or short-term rental, I should say, in, in R1 zone will be brought back to the planning commission for further discussion and then it'll be eventually referred back to city council for final decision. So that's on July 15th. Again, our Fourth of July celebration is on the 5th and we thank everybody who's been mentioned above, Citizens Bank, Buchanan Toyota, Mike Ross and Ike Morris, Parmar, The Donut Spot, and Potesta and Associates for sponsoring the fireworks. And then finally, under correspondence and information, if you will see in your packet, we, the members of the water board, heard a presentation from Potesta and Associates at our meeting last week. You see before you, it's near the very end of the packet, it's right past the, all of the notices, the Fourth of July celebration and all that stuff. Under D6, you see the City of Buchanan Water Treatment Plant Project schedule that has been, has been laid out by Potesta and Associates. This is an approximation. There could be some tweaks along the way, but just so the council is aware, the city, the water board did take action to support this plan of action, this, this schedule, I should say, took action to support the schedule of constructing an all-new water plant for our city. That board includes myself, Mr. McCauley, Mr. Thomas. We are, and Mr. Sanders is recorder that sits in those meetings. We are faced with a very, an aging water plant, as we all know. There is, at this time, no reason for any concern or alarm for our water plant. Our water system is in very good working order. Our crews have done an incredible job of keeping our current water plant up, keeping it functional and keeping it as being as low cost as possible to our board and to our, to our taxpayers. However, as all things do eventually age out, we are nearing that timeframe for our waters, for our water plant. I noted it back in, in our State of the City address back in January, we have met with our public service districts. We brought them to the table and we shared with them, members of, representation from Potesta was here to go over a, about a 40-minute presentation of, of what a new water plant looks like for our city residents, for our business owners, as well as for our public service districts, because we provide water via the public service district network to about 92% of Upsher County. So this is a very serious matter, it's a very important matter, but we are, the water board took its first step last week toward realizing a new water plant in our city. There will be lots of meetings, there will be lots of hoops that council will be called to jump through. And by that, I mean, we'll be asked to take action under strategic issues for discussion and/or vote, the different pieces of building a new water plant. There will be a rate study that will be conducted as to what our rate will look like, both from a stair stepping standpoint and at the end of this, in order to pay for said water plant. So this is, before you, is not an actionable item tonight, just a, just for your looksee, for your consideration. As it was noted in the water board meeting, we do not, although we want to move quickly, you can see before you, even if we were to start now, which that first ball has been set into, into motion, it's till 2030 till we see a water plant. So it is a long process, it's a very, it's a, it's, it's, it's a big project, could be the largest project the city has ever taken on in its history. We're looking at north of $40 million for this water plant. But again, it is, it is a necessary, very necessary project as drinking water and having quality drinking water is the number one quality of life issue that we have here in our community. So if you have any questions, look it over, approach a member of the water board and we can get some answers from Potesta. Any of the city council members who are interested are welcome to attend our water board meeting. You cannot vote because you are not a member of it, but eventually that, those discussions will make it to the city council table for final authorization, so there is, that, that's a layer of, of comfort, I think, for everyone that sits on this table. But we are, we have, we have taken the first big step and as I believe Raz, Erasmo Rizzo, who's on our water board, who you might remember was our sanitary department supervisor before Ethan, observed that this is, this is a monumental step and we, it may not have totally sunk in yet when it, when it was taken action upon back last week, but it was and we are, we are, we are getting moving, so. Probably took more time on that than I should have, but I wanted to make sure that everyone understands where we are with our endeavor to construct a new water plant. Okay, so much more to come on that. Okay, thank you. Under the consent agenda, we need to break out the E1 and E3 because Mr. Rigger needs to abstain on E2. So is there a motion to approve the consent agenda E1, which would include the special meeting minutes of, of 6:11 and then the approval, approval of the payment of our bills?
She'll move.
Motion by Mr. McCauley, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Thomas. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed. That motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion to approve the building and wiring permits?
So moved.
Motion by Bucklew, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Thomas. Noting Mr. Rigger's abstention, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed. Motion carries, okay. We don't have any issues for strategic tonight because we've already made our announcement for Mr. Croston, so we will go right to our council comments and announcements, beginning with Mrs. Bucklew.
I want to welcome Ethan Croston. I hope he'll do a wonderful job. Be hard to fill his shoes, but I think he can do it.
He'll be shot.
Also, I want to welcome Jack back to city council and also I want to welcome Rob Sulliani. I think he'll be a big asset for our council. Also, I'd like to mention that I attended, Friday night, I attended the, the kids theater that they did, the Funny Nemo, that Elle McNish, from the high school student directed this show, got 30 little kids. They had a blast and they did a wonderful job and I'm hoping this will be a yearly thing for the kids, but it was very good.
We'll do it again.
I mean, it was packed. The N, I can't remember the name.
Funny Nemo.
Funny Nemo.
Yes, Funny Nemo, yes.
Okay, great.
But yeah, it was packed. They did a six o'clock show and a seven o'clock show, lasted basically half an hour, but it was very well attended.
Thank you. Mr. McCauley.
Just a few comments. Sometimes folks in our community work incredibly hard, whether they're on the city council or whether they're just out there plugging away. Even though he's playing Gilligan's Island out in the Caribbean right now, I just want to thank CJ Rylands for his eight years of stalwart service to the city. We know CJ for many years prior to coming aboard on council in 2016, had been doing lots of things to advance Jawbone Park and realize the establishment of Festival Fridays and then the Opera House, everything that happens there. It's like, everything CJ touches ends up being a crown jewel in Buchanan. Even though he'll never hear this and he punched me in the ribs if he heard me complimenting him, I just want to go on record with that. Similarly, I want to congratulate all of the returning colleagues, Pam, Jack, and Robbie to council and welcome Rob Sulliani. I think it'll be a, it's, it's always good every once in a while to get a fresh set of eyes on how we do things and with Rob's many years now of business experience, it brings to the table that other side of things that CJ brought to us in 2016, welcome aboard. The news about Stockard is thrilling. I do think that it would be incumbent upon our council to soon maybe entertain an executive session to discuss other elements of Stockard, not so much the building project, but what Stockard is going to look like going forward relative to staffing and all of it. For us to sit here and think that we're gonna add a 60% floor space addition to the enterprise over there with Stockard and not, not need to think about the staffing side of things, I think it's something worthy of discussion, Robbie, that maybe we can have. I don't know if you can put that on the July.
Sure.
Hit list or not, but I've got some thoughts on the matter.
You know, what we could do is we could even maybe infuse it to get, because we, we have our council meeting the same night as our Stockard meeting. We could have an executive session following our Stockard meeting and then leading in, you know, yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe like 5:30 or 6 o'clock or something like that.
I think that's, I think that's a really good idea and that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rigger.
All right, well, congratulations to Pam and Rob, to you, Mr. Mayor, and being selected for another term and Rob for your maiden voyage on the council. Congratulations. I'm excited about the water plant. I think that everyone knows that I am concerned about the infrastructure of Upsher County, Buchanan in particular. Main Street and Jerry, I saw this a thousand times from me, we're one catastrophic event away from who knows what and maintaining infrastructure is vital for our citizens and community and I think the water plant is certainly a step in the right direction. I want to commend the water board. I just think that improving infrastructure and moving forward on these things, just not patching water leaks or whatever, but preparing for the future is vital to the city. Ethan, congratulations. I'll bring you a tie at the next meeting. You think I'm kidding? And of course, Jody with the barbecue bash, kudos to her, it was a big success. And, and our volunteers, you know, this, this guy's Saturday, what, 90 degrees or something and these gentlemen are standing up on Main Street walking traffic and kudos to them, just a shout out, we appreciate them and, and it's
to shout out, we appreciate them, and it's two reporters here, they come to every meeting. We know how exciting it is for you to be here, and I need to commend you to doing your jobs.
Do you want to know the truth, seriously, like ever since I worked at the Delta City Councils, been my favorite thing to cover?
Oh, good.
We need to get her out more.
Seriously? I don't know, I'm a nerd, I guess.
That's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Rigger. Mr. Thomas.
Well, I echo what we've all said about the election. Congratulations on all of you, and I'm really looking forward to working with Rob. I was hoping he would run someday, and we've talked about that before. Ethan, congratulations. I was one of the individuals that was really very excited that we were going to go from within, because I think that's really good for an organization, to have people take more leadership positions from within their own organization, and so, congratulations.
I appreciate it, thank you.
I had the opportunity last night to attend the annual Fred Brooks Garden Club at the Link, it was the Rose Annual Meeting, and that organization was founded in 1937. I didn't realize it was that old. And they have about, somewhere between 35 and 45 members, and they do a lot of great things for the community, and I do have some raffle tickets if anybody wants to buy some for support of Fred Brooks Garden Club. We got some tough issues ahead of us, and one of those, from my perspective, is we increase the fees for foreign police, and we must increase the first due. And my suggestion, my recommendation will be, at some point in time, the city council should approve that the people residing in the first due area pay the same amount that the city residents pay. That may not go down real good with the county commission, but I think it's something that should be done, and Robbie, we need to do it sooner the better. And you all have a great weekend, and stay cool in this weather, it was 95 or 96 degrees today at one point in time, and I guess the rest of the week's gonna be pretty miserable as far as, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Thomas. Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I echo his welcome. Congratulations to Ethan Croston. We look forward to great, great things from you, and as far as Mr. Rigger's comment, you can borrow all of those many ties that's in the Jerry Arnold Award Council meeting. Each one of those, and you know, that's all you require, as far as that goes. Congratulations to Pam, Jack, and the mayor, Robbie Skinner, and a big welcome to Rob Zulliani. I'm really looking forward to working with you, sir, as we go forward. I know it's gonna be a great asset to the community and to the council seat. Mr. McCauley, you mentioned CJ Rylands. I made CJ a promise before he left, you know, I have secured this for Mr. Rylands. It's his nameplate, and I've already alerted Ambie, she's gotta get a new one for you with your name on it, you know, because Mr. Rylands will put this, you know, rightfully sell on his desk at the top of the steps on the third floor of his building. So, I'll take that in my possession until we deliver successfully to Mr. Rylands. Finally, well, two things, barbecue bash, great, great success. As Jody mentioned, I was not in town, I was in Charleston, South Carolina, attending the Miss South Carolina USA, Miss North Carolina USA combined pageant, where my dear friend and colleague, who has been with the Miss Universe Organization for 44 years, concluded her final event alongside of her partner, her son, her eldest son, they're retiring from the Miss Universe Organization, and hopefully they'll have some great things that has new chapters as well. Finally, 11 years ago this day, 11 years ago today, I was in Las Vegas at the Miss USA Pageant, and I experienced my second national win. Miss Connecticut USA, who I was representing as her state director, won the title of Miss USA football language, that's a Super Bowl win. So, I got my second Super Bowl 11 years ago today on this very date. So, Erin Brady, they can't pronounce her married name, it's a lovely name, but she's a beautiful woman, very accomplished woman. Posted on my Facebook, please take a look at it. She is an extraordinary woman who's been very successful, so fond memories from 11 years ago today. So, it's kind of nice to have those kind of memories. And that's it, thank you, we'll see you next round.
Thanks, sir. Congratulations again to Pam and to Jack. Randy, thank you again for ministering the oath for myself, and Rob, welcome aboard, I was proud to support you, and you know, I think you're gonna be a great councilman here for our city, and I, you know, bringing, bringing the business background and all of your experiences, you're gonna be a great asset here to the table, and you know, we, goes without saying, I think, but you know, we don't always agree with one another up here, but that is what makes it, that's part of what makes the community move forward. And so, we will welcome the discussions and maybe even some disagreements from time to time, but we're happy to have you. Ethan, congratulations again, very happy that we're able to push you forward and that you're willing to take on the challenge, and you know, Jerry is certainly a wealth of knowledge that he'll be pouring into you, you'll be drinking from a fire hose, and but it's gonna be, it's gonna be a good, good experience for you, and a good experience for Jerry to kind of, you know, show what, I don't know that Jerry always realizes everything that he does, and I think it's gonna be eye-opening for him to see everything that he does too, to help you along, so. Thank you again to Jody, yes, for the barbecue bash, it was, I wasn't here either. My fiance planned us a trip many, many months ago to celebrate my birthday, 35, it's hard to believe, but that happened on Sunday, so Jack and I, we celebrated our birthday together on, together but apart on Sunday.
Those old people.
I know, yeah, Jack's 35 too, though. But you know, it was, from everything I've heard, it was a great success, and you know, it just adds to what makes Buchanan Buchanan, and what makes it so special. So, these events are woven into our fabric here, so thanks to all the, everyone who volunteers their time to make it happen. With that, it's 8:26. I'd entertain a motion that we adjourn. Happy 4th of July, happy West Virginia Day, enjoy your weekend.
I'm gonna say something about CJ next meeting.